Let's begin. This is, welcome to the April 14th meeting of the Milton Select Board. Before we begin, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for that. We don't have on the agenda, but we're gonna, we'll do a public comment as we have for many of these meetings. And the process for the public comment is as follows. We are gonna have Hillary unmute all of the participants. And then if someone wants to participate in public comment, they should, they should say that they want to participate in public comments, state their name. And if they're participating by phone, state the final four digits of their phone number so we can identify them. After everyone who wants to speak in public comment identifies themselves as wanting to speak, I will ask Hillary to mute all of, all the participants again, and then we will unmute each participant for the purpose of public comment. So again, anyone for public comment, we're gonna unmute the lines. Say your name, and if you're on the phone, say the last four digits of your phone number, and then we'll mute all the lines and we'll go through the list if there's anyone for public comment. So Hillary, if you could, if you could unmute the, all the lines, please?
Hello, Diane DiTulio Agostino.
Okay, Diane.
And you can raise my hand up there.
Well, there we go. Okay, just hold on a second, Diane. And anyone else for public comment? Going once? Going twice? All right. All right, so Hillary, I'm gonna ask you to mute again all of the lines except for the members, Mike Dennehy and Ms. Agostino. Mr. DiTulio Agostino, sorry for...
No, it's Agostino, that's fine.
All right.
Are we all set?
Yeah, all set.
We're all set, yes. Okay, thank you for this opportunity to check in with the Select Board as well as I see. Oh, I thought we had the Carolyn Kinsella on there a minute ago, now she seems to have dropped off the list. Calling in because at the last meeting of the Commission on Disability, we actually discussed trying to get on the Select Board's agenda before town meeting, before the elections. We wanted to bring up some important topics, and this is just a quick synopsis of what might have been discussed if we had been able to come in. I know that there are many concerned residents with disabilities and those that are vulnerable that have reached out to me or to other people to reach out to me regarding their concern for the virus, the COVID-19. So with that in mind, I did just wanna touch base that I have emailed you a few weeks ago that the state of emergency, I am concerned that a lot of residents, when I mentioned, you know Milton declared a state of emergency, I think it was back on March 23rd, they're completely unaware of it. So I would greatly appreciate on behalf of so many of the residents that, in fact, the concern, The Globe is doing an article, she just posted it at 3:30, asking, "How do you feel when you go out and you see people not wearing a mask?" So to someone like myself and other people with disabilities who are vulnerable, they have weak immune systems, that informing the residents that we actually did declare a state of emergency, that we actually do, I mean Carolyn's doing an incredible job on the Board of Health, but I just feel that we need the Select Board to do whatever they can to get the message out. And I did check around some other towns to give you an idea of what other towns might be doing, because social media is so new to everyone. And the town that I chose was Arlington, so you might wanna look at not what they did on their website, the Italian in me, I'm talking with my hands here. But what they did on their website, they carried it through the important social media Facebook pages, the exact same picture and the exact same message. And it wasn't, you know, Carolyn's gotta do her legal advisories based on how the Department of Health, which is more reading material for those residents who are concerned, and in order to help get the message out, something simpler in the way of a marketing piece, you know, very little verbiage, more symbols, more signs. There are some, Stanford University did a great video, and there was another, Johns Hopkins, I think, and I will share those with you to take into consideration, probably post to them. There aren't even any words on these videos. It's all, so anyone who couldn't hear, you might've heard that the Milton Access TV is gonna be getting closed caption once maybe this is all over, but for those people who might be home and just turn on the TV and can't, you know, they don't even know, some of them, how to turn on closed captioning to begin with, a visual might alleviate some of those fears. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, I'm sure you've thought, or maybe have individuals that you're friends with, but we, we just feel that looking around town, even if you just take a short ride to the cemetery, which is a real hubbub of activity these days, that the message isn't quite getting across that social distancing might not just be for you and your grandparent or your parent, but for the other person that you might be walking by, or the other person that, you know, you're walking into the small connoisseur with. So anything that you can do to assist would be greatly appreciated, and we do look forward to being on your agenda one of these evenings.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you, Diane. And Diane, you can certainly get on the agenda. For, we're, we're keeping our regular meetings, and we've added meetings. We've pretty much met twice a week, I think, you know, since March 16th, so, so we can certainly get you on the agenda. That's, that should be fine.
There was one other thing that did come to my attention, because I was trying to reach, I know Carolyn's been great, I don't know how she's doing what she's doing, you know, she's only got four people in the department. I tried to reach the Board of Health, interesting, I think it's very important since people are scattered and about, that the website be updated so that emails and/or a phone number of someone in each department, that we clarify for those people that have questions.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Great, thank you, Diane. Okay, so Hillary, if you could take us back to just the members, Mr. Dennehy and Caroline Kinsella, we're gonna go to item two, the COVID-19 update. And I will ask Carolyn, and I'll ask the members to mute ourselves, just so we cut down on the background noise for Caroline. And Caroline, if you're available, if you could provide us with your update.
I'm sorry, Mike, can you just mention, are you recording this meeting for it to be replayed? Just because, you know, if it's being recorded, people should know, I just wanted to ask.
Yes, all the meetings are recorded, and they're on the MPAG website, and this is also being televised on MPAG right now. So, okay, all right, so Hillary, if you could, if you could mute all the lines except for the members and Caroline Kinsella, then we will ask Caroline to give her update. Caroline?
Thank you Chair Zulus, and thank you Diane for your information about Arlington's website, I'll take a look at that, and the videos, if you have some videos, please send them to me. I did get one of your emails, and I did forward it to IT, but I agree with you, we need to put more information out there with symbols and signs, so people can follow what's going on with COVID-19. So I, so I'm happy to speak with you Dianes, if you wanna reach out to me, and, and we'll try to update the website. Today in Milton, we have a total of 98 residents who have tested positive for COVID-19. We're spending upwards of one and a half to two hours filling out the necessary interview tools and identifying contacts. It's been a bit of a challenge here at the Health Department, because we're finding a number of incorrect addresses, so we're getting the labs. I had three addresses today that were incorrect, one was Quincy, Hyde Park, and Matapan. And a number of them don't have phone numbers either, so we're spending time trying to get phone numbers and correct addresses, so that's slowing us down a little bit. But I am updating the case numbers daily on the Town and Milton website, so if you go to the main page, you go to the red ribbon, and then click on information from the Health Department, that's where I'm updating it every day, the increase in the numbers. You'll also find quarantine and isolation guidelines on that site, and numerous resources including mental health and information where you can donate to the food pantries. I am encouraging anyone who becomes ill to isolate at home and contact their primary care doctor. And the Centers for Disease Control is advising a voluntary public health measure, and Diane brought this up, to wear a cloth, a face covering to slow the spread of the virus, where other social distancing measures are difficult to maintain, like in the grocery store or the pharmacy, if you're, if you can't maintain that six-foot radius, then you should be wearing something covering your mouth and your nose. I know I go for a lot of walks, I find it a struggle to keep a mask on while I'm walking on the street, so I do have a scarf, but if you can, if you could actually maintain that six-foot distance, and I see a lot of people doing this, I'm walking down the sidewalk, someone's walking in front of me, and they move off to the street, or I move off to the street, so we are keeping that six-foot distance, so that's what I wanna see, that people are social distancing. But if you can't, if you're going into the grocery stores or the pharmacies, please put something on your face. If you can't, if you can't do the social distancing, please put a cloth covering or a mask on your face, so you're preventing the spread of the virus. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you Caroline. Questions or comments from the members? Seeing none.
I just, I'm sorry, Michael.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanna say, I just wanna say thank you to Caroline again one more time for all that she's doing on this.
Thank you, Richard. We're doing our best we can here at the Health Department. I thank God for my staff, they're really working hard, and the school nurses, and some public health nurses, and we're really doing the best we can every day here for the town. And I want the town to be safe, so we're trying to do the best we can.
Hang in there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. And, and thank you Caroline, obviously you've been, you've been going way above and beyond and working incredible hours and performing to a very high level, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you for that Caroline. Anything else on the COVID-19 update? I have one thing to introduce, and we had had some discussions last time about a letter, a letter that was going to the governor about a stay-at-home order and a stay-at-home advisory, and what we could do in Milton to try to reinforce the fact that people should stay at home unless they're going out for essential errands, and follow the advisories on face coverings, and follow the advisories on staying six feet away. And while we have been advised that we don't have the legal authority to issue any kind of an order with respect to those things, and that is the governor, that is the province of the governor, we do have the opportunity to issue proclamations, just, just last week we issued, or yeah, last week we issued proclamations for Earth Day, for Arbor Day, stating that these things were important, that we urged Milton residents to, to participate and to recognize those days. It seems to me so it is with COVID-19, and the advisories that we have from the Department of Public Health on staying at home and social distancing of six feet, and the face covering advisory that also went out from the Department of Public Health. So we have to consider a proclamation where we would, would, would state that we think that all Milton residents should follow the Massachusetts Department of Public Health's stay-at-home advisory and the face covering advisory, and they would urge all residents to do that. And, and so this, it's, it's not quite, it's not quite maybe what we would want to do if we had the authority, but this is something that seems to me we can consider doing in order to try to spread the word and to try to urge people to, to follow those guidelines more than they have. So that's the preface, and as you, as you saw, it went to Town Council, and Town Council just had a small ministerial change, and so, anyway, thoughts and comments and questions Richard, do you have some?
Silence is deafening. Silence is deafening.
Some of us are having trouble hearing.
So I truly appreciate your efforts on this, I just don't know if it has the teeth that we need, right, you know, right now, you know, we're sitting here tonight, first Boston police officer has died, I don't know if anyone saw the post today, BI Deaconess Milton, Dr. John Mahoney, longtime, 42-year member of the medical staff there, died this weekend of COVID-19 after tough, tough battles, just, I don't know, I just, I, it definitely spells it out enough, spells it out, but I think, as we all know, proclamations are usually we give in joyful things or ceremonial things, not where we really want people to pay attention to us and adhere to our wishes, but I do appreciate your efforts, and I just don't know if it has the teeth we need right now.
Other comments or questions from the members?
Well, I, I take your point about proclamations are usually about joyful events, I mean, there are also resolutions, but Richard, if you're looking for teeth, what did you have in mind?
That's the whole thing, I've looked at, I listened to the AG on the 43rd of July, I see Cambridge came out today, they're going to issue something very harsh tomorrow, part of their concerns of what's going on in the stores, and I see it, I, I was in one yesterday, and I'm gonna say less than half are wearing masks, and it just, Caroline's right when she says it, you know, it's, it's one thing if you're outside and you're, you're definitely able to maintain the social distancing, I think we all realize it's a challenge once you want to try and do any type of activity that supports daily life, so. I'm working all the time, Melinda, I'm just, I'm just not sure, I suppose, I appreciate the sentiment, I just think at some point here we're gonna need something that has some type of teeth to it, that just, we see it in other states, I mean, you see people being taken off of public transit, and I'm advocating those, with Caroline's, you've got 100 people of this community that have it, and, I don't know, I'm not sure, I just don't know. Actually, as I read through it, I just read it again twice before we started tonight, just trying to think of a way to try and give it some more teeth to it, that's all, just, just thinking out loud here.
I'm in support of it, I think it's a creative effort by the Chair to address the issue, and it does say at the end, you know, we urge all Milton residents to, I'll go back to the beginning, to follow the stay-at-home advisory and the face covering advisory, which are the two issues, the two orders issued by the Department of Public Health and the governor. So, you know, I don't know how much stronger we can get on record state, and we urge residents to do that. If we're looking for enforcement, I think we can double our efforts to ask the Police Department to enforce gatherings of young people or adults, but often it's teenagers at, like, at ball fields or play fields, and I think we could, you know, ask the Police Department to step up their efforts to do that, I think they're doing a lot already, but we could make that request, and if necessary, if we need additional overtime, we can, we can look at different ways to fund that, including through the reserve fund. But I support the Chair's proclamation, I think it's something that we should sign onto, we could put it up on the Town website, we can distribute it through the usual communication channels, like we've done with the declaration of emergency, and put it out through social media, and that, that's how I would try to address more enforcement issues, but in terms of the Board making a statement and speaking to the issue, I think this is a good effort, and we should support it.
So, can I speak? Okay.
If I just may, we lost Melinda, and so Hillary, could you, I'm sorry, just a second, Hillary, could, could you try to get a note to Melinda, her hotspot must have gone out?
Yes, I can let her know.
Can you let her know that she's, she's gone? I'm sorry, Richard, go ahead.
So, to Katie's point, I'm prepared to make a motion, and the only change that would make, offer as a friendly amendment is in, is in the final, is in the final paragraph here. Instead of urge, I think I'd like to use the language that's actually, just three words, two words actually come out of the Trump casting statute 26620, which is that, I think that we're, and that, I think that we, we wanna say that we state that all entities of Milton government, to include the public health and the Police Department, will take notice of this proclamation and take whatever measures necessary to achieve enforcement. I know it, it doesn't have all the, that's why I'm trying to use non-statutory words, because we don't really have any statutes to go here, but that's, I don't know, maybe you could, maybe something like, just, just something a little bit stronger, maybe even sometimes if you even just mention the word, you know, Milton Police don't come out, will be taking notice of this advisory or proclamation, I think you get the drift away, but other than that, I make a motion to approve it.
Well, I wonder if, and again, I don't wanna stand on ceremony and delay it, but I wonder if, if I could, you know, we could try to wordsmith a little bit, either now or we could, we could do it offline, and, so we wanna say something to the effect that, you know, we urge all, we, we wanna say that all, all Milton, I guess I'm searching here, we want all Milton government to take notice of this, or to, will take, I'm sorry, Richard, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not doing well here, can you, can you help out?
No, no, so my thought is at the end of, so, it says Milton should follow the stay-at-home advisory and face covering advisory, and take notice that all aspects of Milton government to include the Milton Board of Public Health, the Milton Public Health Department and the Milton Police Department. I'm just trying to think of the words that I wanna put in to go follow that. Will take notice, or do take notice of this proclamation, and I think that's just tough, because I don't think you got any more teeth you can add to it after that. You know what I mean? I don't think you can, or take notice of this advisory.
Richard, let me ask a question, because I think the way it's drafted currently, it's directed at residents, but the town departments, like the police and the Health Department, I know the Health Department's under another board, but we're working cooperatively with them. I mean, I think we can, if we approve this, we could direct a copy of this to them and make the request that the police do some additional enforcement, and that the Health Department, enforcement is probably not really within their realm, and they have a lot in their plate with the testing and the follow-up with the people who do have the virus, but I mean, I think we could direct departments to take certain actions outside of the department, or in addition to it.
The other, the other thing too, if I wanna help.
Is that what you're getting at, really, was trying to make sure that they're aware of this, and that they?
Oh, no, 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 I think they're all aware, I think it's to the average citizen.
Where the...
We're not, we're not in this alone, we're in this together, all of us, that's, that's what I'm, I'm trying to, and I'm just thinking out loud, so I...
No, I, Richard, I had something similar, I sent my comments back in an email, and so I'm not, I'm sorry, I got kicked out of the meeting and I couldn't dial back in, but it's Melinda. I said that we should talk about also, in addition to protecting residents, protecting medical first response responders, essential workers, and the vulnerable and aged in addition to Milton residents. I just think that it's important to emphasize that it's more than, than just, I think Diane was saying this, it's more than just about your immediate family or your immediate neighbors, I mean, this has huge implications for us getting, getting going again as a society and an economy, and, so I think that's one thing I suggested. And then another thing I said, that I think we also should encourage people to conscientiously follow the governor's guidance as a sign of care for our community and responsible action to aid in the effective management and ending of the pandemic. I just, I, I think this is a great idea and a great start, and I just, maybe we could just tweak it a little, and I like Katie's idea of sending it around not only to the departments and things, but to, but to business owners, both those that are, are open and caring for us now, and those who, that will open and, and continue to care for, for us, so.
So, Melinda, do you wanna, do you wanna, do you wanna make, make those changes now, real time, or do we wanna, I'm happy to do that, and then all we can, all we can make them and take it up again, I think we're gonna have to meet Thursday on East Milton Letter anyway, so.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to, to make those changes for Thursday, or if you just wanna vote them in and I can send them.
Yeah, I'm happy to take them as a friendly amendment, and I'll accept them as a friendly amendment and, and do it tonight.
Okay, great.
I'd agree with that as well.
Okay. All right, so, so now we have, well, you don't have a motion yet, I don't, do we have a motion? I don't remember.
No, I made a mo, I made a motion, but we don't have a second.
Okay.
What was the motion, Richard?
He did not make a motion.
I made a motion, Katie. Yeah, I did, oh, it didn't come in then. Yeah, so I made a motion to accept it with whatever changes the Chair inserts, you, we're both, Melinda and I both kinda made, with whatever changes we can insert there in the final paragraph.
I'll second.
The rest are fine.
I'll second, I'll just offer a friendly amendment, we approve it, just subject to the Chair incorporating the changes, because it's important we get this out timely, rather than having to wait for Thursday, and your changes both sound fine, if you can just delegate the Chair to do the wordsmithing, I think that would work. It's all everybody's issue.
That's, that's exactly what I want, I don't wanna wait till Thursday, the faster we get this out, get it to the media, let's get it out there. And Mr. Dennehy, just while we're on this report, because I'm gonna forget, can we get that signboard back in East Milton Square, it's been gone for a week.
Okay, so, so the motion's been made and seconded, and the motion is to approve the proclamation with the amendments that Ms. Collins has referenced, and Mr. Wells has, has referenced, we'll, we'll try to wordsmith it to that end and get it out tomorrow.
I just sent you my suggestions.
Okay.
We also add to the motion just to authorize some of the staff who sign the names, because rather than all of us coming up to Town Hall to sign, I think we could get that to someone else.
Sure, absolutely.
Great.
Yep, I'm fine with that.
All right, any, oh, sorry, Richard.
No, I'm talking out loud.
Okay. Any further discussion on this?
Yeah.
Although, oh, yes, Melinda.
Oh, no, I said no, no discussion.
Okay. All those in favor, this is a roll co-vote, Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus, yes. Okay. Anything further on the COVID-19, item two, the COVID-19 update? Seeing none, we'll go to item three, which is a discussion approval of the letters of response on the 40B site eligibility applications. We approved the drafts for 648 Canton Ave. and 582 Blue Hill Avenue last Thursday, those have been up on the website since Friday, I believe. It's a tight timeframe, but unfortunately, this is our schedule, and so, so we are, I believe, ready to talk about approving those. Any, so why don't we take them, why don't we take them separately? First, we can talk about 648 Canton Ave., or we can talk about 648 Canton Ave. and 582 Blue Hill Avenue together. Blue Hill Avenue together.
Mr. Chair, what's all right with you, just to get, for the purpose of discussion, I'll gladly, as Richard Wells, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve letters of response for 40B site eligibility for 648 Canton Ave. and 582 Blue Hill Ave.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. Thank you, Richard. Any discussion on these?
Well, I, I did, I did want to note that it, it's too late at the moment, but I thought we got a nice suggestion from a resident, whose name escapes me, I'm sorry, there's so many letters from people these past weeks, who, who said that it, it would be interesting to see some massing studies from successful projects. So that's something for us to consider in, in the future, and also as we hopefully hear back from mass housing. So I just thought I would mention that, I didn't know if other people had seen it.
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Yes, Mr. Dennehy.
There, there were two late supplementary documents that were sent from the Tamposy group today. I don't know if the board saw that, they came in around 3 o'clock today.
Yeah, I just thought.
And a subsequent email from Kat Miller, who's the mass housing representative for 582 Blue Hill Ave.
Yeah.
I, I have not seen that, so maybe you can tell us, is it relevant to, to the letter, to approving and not approving, or is it relevant to the letters?
So, in, in the follow-up email from Kat Miller, it seems like she's extending the deadline for 582 Blue Hill Ave., 15 days, based on the Tamposy filing late today.
Oh, they've filed today?
That, we received that supplementary email today at 3:09 P. M.
Mike, what was the, sorry, what was the gist of that, Mike? I didn't see that. Could you, could you give us the highlights?
Let me see, let's see, let's bear with me one second. I'm opening up the 648 Canton Ave. one. It's a letter from Comprehensive Land Haulings to Kat Miller, on behalf of 648 Canton Ave. LLC, we're pleased to provide the attached supplement to the application. Closed, please find revised mass housing comprehensive permit site approval application pages four, nine through 10, 14 through 19. So it seems substantive enough that Kat Miller then emailed, probably minutes ago, within the last half hour, saying that 582 Blue Hill Ave. would receive an extension of 15 days. I'm trying to locate that email that I.
All right, so, 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 so here's, here's, here's the suggestion. This is all happening real time. If we have an extension, we may want to avail ourselves of that, we just, we probably need to confirm that. So, so my suggestion is to approve the 648 Canton Ave. letter, approve 582 subject to, subject to any extensions from mass housing, and then if there's an extension, we can always go back and, 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 and send a letter later. So that's, that's a suggestion.
Mr. Chair, any value in submitting our letters as they are in the original applications? And then, I, I don't know how extensive these changes might be, they may be minimal, they may be extensive, but they come over here, you know, yeah, late in the afternoon, the day before our comments are due, so there's not, and my computer's been down for much of the day, there hasn't been any time for anyone really to analyze these. I would suggest submit our comments, and if we have additional, submit an additional one.
I like that idea, Katie, I, I would support that 100%.
And I think we should consult Barrett to see whether she has any thoughts on this. I, I'd want to hear her opinion on it, so maybe, maybe what approach Mike suggested is ultimately the right one, but, you know, I, I'm glad that Tony agrees with that. I, I just think that we've had these for a long time, we've had a lot of input into them, we should let mass housing know what our thoughts are, and then.
Yes.
If there's some changes we want to make, if we have 15 days to file a supplement, I think we should go ahead and do that.
Mr. Wells?
Yes, so, I agree, I agree with Katie. I did call Mr. Clark just before we started today, because I wanted to know what, he said that the changes are minimal, that there's nothing really significant there, and I agree with Katie and Tony, I think, based on what you suggested, I think we should go ahead and submit them, and pending any change we can add to it. It seems that, I'm not sure what exactly it is that got him, it looks like he changed one thing based on something that happened recently, that's what Mr. Clark told me, so, but he said they were minimal, not substantial, and nothing.
Yeah, but it.
But it changed our opinion as to how we feel.
I'm sure that it's not going to change our.
Ms. Conlon.
Oh, I agree.
Tony, 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 let's, let's try to, Melinda was trying to talk before, so let's let Melinda talk, and then you can talk, Ms. Collins.
That, that's okay, I'm, I'm sure I've been talking over people, because they can't hear you. But, but I, I think that, I agree that we should just submit, but perhaps we should alter the letter a little to, to say that we acknowledge that we received late in the day this change, and that we appreciate an additional 15 days to submit further comments, should they, should we deem them warranted, just so that we keep that, that crack open in case, you know, I, I would hate for us to submit the letter and then have them say, well, you can't submit any more comments, because you, you submitted it. So that's the only thing I would do.
So, Tony, before you speak, Melinda, maybe we could accomplish that by keeping the letter as it is, and we could say that in a cover email to them.
Exactly, just as long as it's documented somewhere.
Mr. Farrington?
Right. So I'm just, I'm concerned that, that, you know, if mass housing extended out 15 days, like, that leads me to think, like Mike mentioned earlier, that perhaps these things are so substantial that we need another two weeks to address them. Or it could just be a procedural, procedural matter, where, you know, if the application is amended, it triggers some sort of protocol that then allows for 15-day extension. That's why I asked the question, if we knew what the broad brushstrokes to these, you know, changes were. But, you know, I, I can go through the email right now and look, but Katie's suggestion, I think, is a good one, that the sooner we let mass housing know the thrust of the way we feel, we can, you know, recalibrate or tweak with, you know, a supplemental or addendum letter, if you will.
Sure.
So I have the, I have the answer to Canton Ave., it's, it's a, it's a reduction of eight units, which is probably why they gave us, that's still a massive project, but they reduced it by eight units, which is probably why mass housing has given us an additional 15 days.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Conlon. Just to address Melinda's point, I, I think maybe it might be worth a phone call to, to Kat Miller and housing by the town administrator or the planning director, and just letting them know that we're submitting comments, but we appreciate the 15-day extension, we're going to continue, we'll review the new, the revised application, and if we have further comments, then we'll submit another letter. But I, I think a phone call, Ms. Miller, might be the right approach, before we submit the comments. It, it could be followed up by an email, is, is, I would suggest at least an attempt to reach them by phone.
Okay. So, so that sounds like a good process to me. Do, do we want to move ahead with that process? Does anyone have any substantive comments on the two drafts, or do we just want to move ahead to approve them with that, with that caveat on 582?
I would stay with my motion, Mr. Chair.
Oh, just sorry, Richard, Mr. Dennehy?
So I, I misspoke, the 582 Blue Hill Ave. is actually being monitored by and managed by Mike Busby from Mass Housing. Kat Miller is overseeing the 648 Canton Ave. project, and that's the one that's been extended 15 days.
Okay.
I haven't heard from Mr. Busby yet about an extension from 582 Blue Hill Ave., but the Kat Miller email came in at 4:12 this afternoon.
Okay. Okay, so it's 648 that we, that we, that we'll have, make perhaps a phone call and an email to acknowledge that we may make supplemental comments based on the revised, based on the additional time and the revised application. Okay, now, I apologize, I haven't kept track again. Have we made a motion on this?
Yeah, yeah, so Mr. Chair, I would maintain my motion that I made, I'll stick by the motion.
Motion's been made, and I believe seconded now that I remember.
I think I seconded it.
Yeah.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, this will be a roll call vote, Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. Okay, so we will, we will get those two out, subject to contacting Mass Housing on, by phone and email on 648 Canton Ave., to acknowledge that we may have some further comments based on the revised application that we just received a little more than an hour ago, apparently. The, item 3C, the residences at East Milton, we had hoped to have a draft, but apparently we were unable to get the draft before the meeting tonight. I know that our, our consultant had some issues with Storm, perhaps, that went through in some issues the last couple of days. So I fully expect that we'll be getting a draft.
We have it.
Oh, it's come.
We have it.
All right, there we go.
Yeah, it's come.
All right.
Yeah.
So I haven't seen it as yet, it must have come in in the last hour or hour and a half.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure if members want to discuss it, I'm, I'm not in a position to discuss it, and it may lead us to, to have a meeting on Thursday night, although I didn't, I don't know that we, we posted one for Thursday, so we might have to do it for Friday. It's Tuesday, so, Mike Dennehy, is that, that right? We'll probably have to, if we're gonna have a second, a second meeting on this, we'll have to do it for Friday?
Yes, yeah, we'd have to post it tomorrow. If, if, if 5 o'clock works for everyone, we'd have to have it posted by tomorrow at 5:00.
Okay. All right, I apologize for that, I should have thought to, to get something posted, to try to do it Thursday, but we'll now have to just do it on Friday. Any other thoughts on the East Milton letter, or what time on Friday we should, we should have a discussion of that?
If we do it earlier than 5:00, given that it's Friday, I don't think, there may be residents who want to listen in on that, and 5:00 on a Friday is a little, you have it earlier in the afternoon, or late morning?
It's fine with me. Thoughts from Tony, Melinda, and Richard? Melinda?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Oh, Richard, yeah, Melinda?
Um, yeah, that's fine.
Tony, how's your schedule for Friday?
Uh, Friday's the busiest day of the week for me, so I won't be able to call in or attend that meeting.
Okay.
But feel free to carry on without me.
And you can, you can get any comments perhaps to Mike before that, and then Mike can relay any written comments you might have. Katie, what time do you want to, what time do you want to suggest for Friday?
What's convenient for these, for Hillary and Mike, who are setting this up, early afternoon or late morning, I can do either of them.
Mike, what do you think?
Late morning's fine, there is a 1 o'clock call I have to jump on, but this, this is, this is a priority.
How about 11:00? Does 11:00 work for people?
Yes.
Yep.
Mike, is 11:00, oh, sorry.
11:00 is fine, yep, 11:00 is fine.
Melinda?
That, that's okay, are we just, well, I guess it's silly to ask if we're just looking at this, because things will crop up. Yeah, that's fine.
We'll, we'll probably do, you know, as, as has been our practice in the last month, we'll have, we'll have a COVID-19 update.
Right, right. And we want to leave the things to, 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 to get taken care of if they pop up at the last minute.
Right, 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 right. Okay, so we'll have a meeting on Friday at 11:00 a.m. to discuss the East Milton letter. All right, so with that, the next item is our executive session. So if there's nothing else, I will move to enter into executive session and not to return to open session for the purposes of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining, specifically, specifically the Milton Patrol Officers Union, Officers Union, a discussion of which in open sess, open session could have a detrimental effect on the negotiation, negotiating position of the board. Two, strategy with respect to collective bargaining, specifically the Milton Superior Officers Union, a discussion which in open session could have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the, of the board. And three, strategy with respect to collective bargaining, specifically Milton Fire Department Union, a discussion of which in open session could have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the bargaining position of the board. Do I have a second? Motion's been made and seconded, this will be a roll call vote, Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. So we will go into executive session and.